We'll begin by saying the Pledge of Allegiance and Commissioner Newtson will lead this.
Thank you, and we will begin by having the Commissioners introduce themselves and indicate whether or not they have any conflicts of interest. Commissioner Fife.
Peter Fife, no conflicts of interest. Daniel Gonzalez, no conflicts.
Laurie Urkiaga, no conflicts.
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Robert Knudsen, no conflicts.
Melissa Kendall, no conflicts.
All right, as I started to say, we have four items on the agenda today. When you look at the agenda, the items that are marked with an asterisk are legislative. That means they need to go to the City Council and that is, so we are rendering an advisory opinion. Item one, which does not have an asterisk, is administrative and we will be making the decision on that particular agenda item. And we will start then with item number one. George Bills of Gardner and Associates requests project plan approval for 204 new residential units in the MDR medium density residential zone located at approximately 1702 South State Street in the Spring Creek neighborhood, and Brandon Larson has the staff report.
Thank you very much. Actually gonna let if the county, if the city attorney is my making a quick statement just as we get started on this one.
Brandon, your mic needs to come.
Oh, thank you.
City Attorney for Provo. Brandon asked me to come just kind of make a brief announcement. Know that this issue has engendered a lot of response from certain members of the community and given that it's an administrative issue and sort of like the policy issues surrounding zoning change and sort of things have already been kind of passed on by the planning commission and the City Council. We want to make sure that we don't run astray from what we should be focusing on, which is whether or not a project plan complies with the requirements of the ordinance. So just want to kind of make that announcement so that we don't go off on tangents of issues that are more policy related and less as to whether or not project plan approval, entitlement to project plan approval has been shown. So that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is, give you a quick, this always gives me trouble. There we go. So this project is at 1724 South, South State in the Spring Creek neighborhood. You can see the aerial photo, obviously. This is a property that has two pieces to it, a kind of a north and south piece, and you've got the Treeside Charter School right there. I think a number of you are familiar with this property. This is a zoning map showing the current zoning of the property. The council adopted an ordinance approving the MDR zone for the subject property, and so that allows 30 units, units per acre, per gross acre. And so this is the proposal. You've seen, generally seen this before in the concept plan. I don't think the concept plan's changed much since you saw that. This is a medium density residential development with 204 housing units, 30 townhomes, 30 studio apartments, 81 bedroom apartments, and 64 two-bedroom apartments. And let me show you where those are located. The blue areas show the location of the studio apartments and the townhomes, the studio apartments. So these buildings, all seven of those buildings, there's two in that, oh, there's two in that little polygon there, but so each one of those buildings is four stories. So the first three stories are a townhome and the last, the fourth level is, is a studio apartment. Here is the location of the two-bedroom apartments, four buildings, kind of in the northwest corner of the, of the property, and then you can see the location of the one-bedroom apartments. Property is bisected by this drive access that goes, runs, you know, generally east to west to the Treeside Charter School, which is a K through six school, as I understand. Here is a look at their parking plan. They have 378 parking stalls that meets the, the parking standards of the, of the Title 14 of the city code, and I highlighted areas where they've installed bike parking. Bike parking is, is something that's required and they've, they've met the requirements for all types of parking for, for vehicles and for bicycle parking. And each one of these little highlighted, or highlighted areas, I think they have multiple, multiple bike, bike racks. In this case, these bigger ones here are like bike lockers, so large bike lockers for the residents. Look at the elevations. This is for the one-bedroom apartments. You can see the exterior there with the rock and, and concrete or hardy board. And another look at the, this is a two-bed elevation for the two-bedroom apartments, which is fairly similar, again, rock and mainly concrete board siding. Similar siding for all buildings. This is a look at the townhomes and studios. So a little look at the, the floor plans for the one-bedroom, one-bedroom apartments. And the two-bedroom apartment. And the three-bedroom. So the three-bedroom, first floor on the, so the, excuse me, the three-bedroom townhome has your, you have a garage on the bottom. Garage here, living area, I believe that's kitchen area down on the second floor, and then your, your bedrooms up on the third floor. Up here, level three, three bedrooms up on top, and then you have a studio apartment on top of each one of those townhomes. They've, this is their landscape plan. They've, they've, they've met all the landscaping requirements. They've added numerous trees, shrubs, plants, and so forth to meet the, the requirements of the code. And so that's, so that's just kind of a quick run-through on that, on that application. So this, this application has gone through review by the, for planning and zoning. It's gone through for Public Works and roads and power. Public Works has been working with UDOT on reviewing this application. Fire marshals reviewed it and the, so it's, it's been through the whole gamut at the, at the city. The, in addition to the requirements. So, so what we've done is we've kind of just reminded you of the process. So we, back in, back in, I believe it was March or April 2021, this concept plan and zone map amendment came to the city and the, the city approved the rezone. And so since that time, they've been working on this project plan, this plan that is a legislate, is, is an administrative approval process. And so we've been looking to make sure that they've met all of the, the applicable requirements. And so we've, we've gone through, done that, that research and, and reviewed the plans multiple times. And everything appears to be in, in good order with, with the exception that, and as, as I've noted in my staff report, there's a few things that Public Works and the, and UDOT are still trying to iron out relative to some road improvements. I think there's still a push to try to get a signal at 1640 South. And I'll go back here. So there's some, and if, if you look in your staff report, you'll, you can see the items that are outstanding. I, I said, reference CRC comments, and it might have been more active, well, they still are CRC comments, but it might have been easier for you to, to locate them if I had just said Public Works staff report. So the outstanding issues are in the last page of the, of, of the staff report on the page entitled Public Works Staff Report. So you can see that that there, there's still some work to be done with the traffic study. And, and a little, there's a few comments from UDOT. Widen the west side of State Street between 1640 South and the school access to accommodate a longer turn lane at southbound traffic turn to the school access. Widen the north side of access to provide better entrance movements. So there's a few outstanding things. Before I calendered this item, I contacted, before I calendered this item for this meeting, I contacted Public Works and said, are we at the point where we can calendar this and bring it before the Planning Commission for approval and condition the approval upon the, the resolution of the last few outstanding things? And they felt that that was, we were at a point where that could be done. And so then, and then I calendared it after I was given, given that indication from the Public Works Department. Since that time, we, there was a few more, a couple of other things that came up that it sounds, and I kind of alluded to this earlier. It sounds like the, and the applicant can speak to this, but it sounds like, again, there's a push to try to facilitate a traffic, traffic signal at 1640 South. And so, right there, and the applicant apparently has suggested that he'd be willing to pay for roughly 40% of the cost for that traffic signal at 1640 South. And so in talking with the Public Works Department, we, we would like that, that, we would like an agreement in writing to memorialize that, that commitment to participate in the, in, in the costs related to that signal. So so that's, that's an additional item that should be considered. And then another thing is, this, this was more recently brought to my attention, but there, in, in the develop, there was a development agreement entered into by the city when the zone change was approved. And there, there's a few things that, that the applicant agreed to do in order to, in order to get that zone change. And one of them was that, that a gate be installed where indicated on the attached concept plan that, and then there's some instructions on when that gate's supposed to be closed and opened and so forth. The issues related to that gate need to be clarified, and I think we can do that. We just, again, I guess what I'm trying to say is we, we, we need to, to make sure that that issue is addressed. So staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the proposed project plan of following conditions, that the outstanding CRC or Public Works staff report comments be resolved prior to building permit application approval, that the associated final plat and record, be recorded prior to building permit application. There, there's a minor application going along with this to make sure the land's divided correctly. So we need to make sure that gets finalized before we start issuing building permits. Three, that an improvement agreement with Public Works be entered into to address traffic improvements such as the light signal at 1640 South. And then the fourth condition would be to make sure that that gate, that gate.
Brandon, could you show us where the gate is?
Yeah, that's, that's actually, the, the concept plan actually says a gate will be installed where indicated on the attached concept plan. The attached concept plan basically looks like this. Concept plan is, does not appear to be shown on the, in, in the development agreement. So that needs to be clarified.
A gate on the concept?
Yeah, I have an idea where it's supposed to be. I think it's supposed to be right here. But the concept plan fails to, to show that. The, the concept plan attached to the development agreement fails to show that. So that needs to be resolved. So that's the fourth condition is that that issue, they, they need to provide us plans showing that they're going to, where that concept, where that gate is to be located and that they, that it's going to be constructed, that it's part of their approved plans. So that's, that's the fourth condition. So.
Brandon, could you restate those four conditions quickly?
Okay, the first two are in your staff report, and that's the, the outstanding CRC or Public Works staff report comments be resolved prior to building permit application approval. The second one is that associated final sub, that the associated final subdivision plat be recorded prior to building permit application approval. Three, that an improvement agreement with the Public Works Department be, be entered into, or let me say that again, that an improvement agreement be entered into with the Public Works Department to address outstanding traffic improvements. And four, that issues related to the, related to the gate in the, the development agreement are addressed prior to building permit approval. Before building, any building permits are, are issued.
Okay, thank you. Time is available for Commissioners to ask staff questions about the plan? Okay, I have one question. Given that the traffic still has not been resolved, what requirements does the city put on developers for existing traffic patterns?
What requirements do they put? Might be helpful to have Public Works come and address the, the traffic side of this, actually. As I, zoning doesn't really actually have any traffic requirements.
What was the question?
The question is what requirements regarding existing traffic do new developers have to accommodate? Or are there any requirements? How do things like that work?
So we would look at existing conditions and then what the new development adds to the existing conditions. And see how that impacts the traffic in the area of their development and any mitigating factors that would be required to make that a safe condition.
Okay. Do you have any increased detail about what is lacking in the traffic?
Yeah, so staff reports go out week and a half before Planning Commission. So I think we've moved probably beyond what you've got. And I think their traffic engineer is prepared to probably give you an update when you get to that point, when you're asking the developer to respond to things. He could probably get you to the point where we've probably resolved most of those issues now.
Okay.
That's pretty normal as we're going through a iterative process of putting comments on a plan and, and then getting revisions back. And then we say, oh yeah, that's good, but this needs to be fixed. And so we've been going through that process back and forth, and there's been things progressing since those comments were written.
Okay, Steph, any more question, or Commissioners, any more questions for Brandon or Mr. Day?
Yeah, this is Peter. Just a quick question on that last item, item two of the Public Works Staff Report. It just says, as a general note, UDOT does not agree that the majority of traffic won't use the signal and use the school access instead. I guess it's kind of a two-fold question. Is that gate like over the street? Or is that one of the motivating factors to get people to not go past the charter school, but to kind of essentially force the traffic out to 1640? Is that, I see someone nodding their head back there. I'm guessing that's the case, but.
Yeah, I've, I've never seen that on the site plan, so I'd have to look at that, where that's supposed to be located to, to give a logical answer.
Okay.
But the, the things you're reading in that staff report, we basically just copied an email that we got from UDOT. So the, the UDOT portion is not our words. It's just straight from UDOT. State Street is their road and they decide what happens with that and with the traffic signal. 1640 is a city road and Spring Creek Drive is a city road. So those would be where we would have specific comments, but even, just, I just noticed this, this site plan actually resolves one of UDOT's concerns. There was a, the road out on State Street used to kind of come out into state as you go north to 1640, and this has straightened it out. So that issue on this site plan has been resolved, so.
Okay, other questions from Commissioners? All right, it doesn't look like that. Thank you. All right.
Laurie, can I ask one more question of?
Yes.
Yeah. Are there any like requirements or standards for the amount of traffic outside of an educational facility? Does that exist? Or yeah, I, I guess standards, requirements for the amount of traffic outside of, of a facility, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm personally not aware of those. Aren't, that's not something I, I review. I'm, I'm not aware of certain traffic counts or standards for, for a, you know, for an educational establishment like a school, but I, maybe the traffic engineer might be able to speak to that that's here, so.
Okay, other, anything else? All right, Commissioner Anderson, would you do your roll call?
Dave Anderson, no conflicts.
Thank you. And then, since the Commissioners don't have any more questions for staff, we'd like to invite the applicant to come forward and present.
My name is Dave Gardner. Along with my business partner, George Bills, we're consulting with the developer on this project. It's a big project and has lots of, lots of issues, and we have worked several months now to go through all of those issues and get them down to a handful. So we are here seeking your approval. I won't go over all the other stuff. I just maybe could answer any questions you might have as far as the developer.
Okay, Commissioner Jensen has some questions?
Okay, my first question is, will there be any CCRs that would forbid drive, driveway or on-street parking? Just to address, I love that there's a large amount of, of parking provided for the development, but in some other projects, there've been like, oh, sorry, we don't want you to park on the street, or we don't want you to park in your driveway because it doesn't look nice. So I just want to make sure that those are really going to be usable extra spaces for visitors.
Right, the, the narrow roads, they're private roads. They cannot park on, tenants cannot park on, on those roads. The road out front, State Street, there, I guess there could be some parking there on occasions. That, we certainly got enough parking onsite, but sometimes you.
What about driveways? There's no restrictions in the development that are going to.
Driveways that would operate, would be functional for parking because you'd be blocking someone else.
But in your, like your garage, your garage, you can park in front of your, that's why I'm, I'm asking specifically about that, the townhomes with the garages. They are allowed to park in their driveway.
In tandem, yes.
My other question. My other question. Two of them. Can you just on the floor plan? I think the studios are on the top floor of those townhomes. So are the townhomes three floors each or is each floor a townhome?
There's three levels in the townhome, and then the studio is on the top of that.
And so where does the studio access? Is there those stairways on the side go all the way up to the studio? They just bypass the townhome?
On the outside of the, yeah, it bypasses the.
So there's no elevators that you are going up four floors to your studio apartment?
No, we're selling those townhouse at those studios to athletic people.
Walk-ups for athletic people only. Okay, just wanted to make sure I was understanding. Thank you. That's it.
Hey, questions from other commissioners?
Yeah, there was just a can we get official clarification on where that gate is going?
It it's going where? Let me see. There we go. It's going right, right, whoops, right here. And that's, like I was saying, it's a big project. That was an oversight that we didn't have. And I think we did have it in one of the site plans, but in one of in the several changes that we've gone through, it got left out inadvertently. And that is designed to keep traffic from our project going in to the school property.
Okay, so the gate is going to be open when or not at all?
Well, it would not be open during school hours.
Can I read?
So I I don't know.
It's spelled out in the development agreement if you want me to tell you what it says.
Okay.
Says the gate. The period, so jumping in the middle of this, the period beginning one half hour before the start of regular school to the one how half hour after the start of regular school, the gate will again be closed one half hour before the end of regular school to one half hour after the end of regular school. The gate will only be closed on days when the school only be closed on days when the school is in regular session.
So just those two hours when people will be dropping off?
Yeah, it's a one half hour before the start of school. I I was looking at that too and trying to.
So it looks like it's a one hour period in the morning and a one hour period in the afternoon that brackets.
That that could be it. I was also wondering if it meant you had to start one half hour before school and one half hour and keep it closed till one half hour after school. Need to look at the language a little closer, but yeah, there there was. It was a little confusing.
If I might add, in in the future, once this gets started, we can work with the school to make those adjustments if it needs to be longer. Perfectly willing to make them longer, the hours of operation or the hours that the gate's being.
So your your expectation now is that it would just be those two hours bracketing.
An hour in the morning, an hour in the afternoon.
Okay.
But that may prove to be not enough, or it may be just fine.
So you're not expecting the school traffic to go north and use the light?
No, because that gate will work both ways. It'll keep our people from going there, but push their people out.
Okay.
I think your reading of it was correct. As I read it again, I think it was intended to to do exactly what you said, so.
Okay. Commissioner Fife?
I know I'm commenting a lot, but are is that road currently in use by the charter school users? The the up to sixteen forty south?
Sixteen forty south.
So where the gate is, is that normally in use presently by charter school members to use? I'm I'm seeing.
Yeah, actually, they are using that.
Gotcha.
That road now that isn't a road. It's just a dirt.
Cool, okay.
But they're using that now, and and that's just for convenience.
Gotcha.
Once we get under construction, that needs to be blocked off.
Understood.
So.
Okay. Other issues, commissioners? Thank you.
Okay.
Might I note one more thing that I don't think I mentioned? This part of the the application is the dedication and construction of of this portion of Spring Creek Drive right here. So that that would be a city, new city street or the dedication construction of the new city street. It, I I believe the traffic studies show it going. Can't totally remember, but I think it may go under eighteen sixty south to the eighteen, yeah, eighteen sixty south, south of this project. And then it goes up north towards the cemetery, and I can't remember where it ends. But it there's some maybe somebody else here who who knows, but I know it it it's a it's a longer road that's meant to give north to south, an additional north to south access in this this section of the city.
So the families dropping off could actually go back and use that road? Okay.
That might line up with the idea of block the gate being right there. These people here could still use that road or where the the people from the the school could use that fire access and come this way and hit it sixteen forty, so.
Okay. Are we? All right. Do we have the neighborhood chair for Spring Creek, Spring Creek here?
Mary Miller, Spring Creek Neighborhood Chair and Southeast Area Rep. We have been on this project for a very long time now. In fact, in September of this year, I will have fulfilled my fourth year as a neighborhood chair on this part of it. And this, in fact, it was at that very first meeting that we had on this project that I was elected. I know that the concern at that time was traffic. I have to admit it was my concern as well. But I have enough faith in the people who run this city who look out for us as citizens because the bottom line, safety is paramount. We're behind this as a neighborhood. It will be an amazing asset to the southeast corridor of Provo. We need this. It takes sixteen forty, which is now a sad little place, and makes it a full street, a complete street with sidewalks and gutters and all of that, and Spring Creek Drive as well. I mean, this is, this is going to be great, not only for the city, but for our neighborhood as well. Also, we're looking at people coming in. Everyone knows that the medical school is underway right now. These apartments could more than meet some single students who really don't, you know, and they're close to it. We're very close to an access to I fifteen. This is a good thing, and I think the time is well past that we need to trust and respect the decisions that have made been made by other departments here in the city. I think we need to move forward on this, and if there are little glitches, be big enough to work together and make this happen. It's good for everybody.
Thank you. Are there any other neighborhood chairs who wish to make comments? All right. It's time for the public to make comments. If you would come up and state your name and where you reside. And each of you will have a three-minute timer on your comments. And so we open it up now to the public.
Hi, my name is Rachel Brunson. I'm a teacher. I've taught in the public education system for about twenty-five years. And next year, I'll be the executive director at Treecide Charter School. I have with me a letter from twenty-four members of our school. This is a meet the teacher night, and we decided some of us just couldn't come and support this and be able to talk. So there's twenty-four members of the school that are saying we're writing in opposition of the development because of the biggest safety risk for our students is during arrival and dismissal when hundreds of vehicles move through the main approach road to Treecide. And our arrival and departure procedures have been approved by the Utah State Charter School Board. And none of this has been approved. So we have to have our pickup and drop-off approved. And Melanie Mullen came over to our school on March second, and she tried to get us to approve something where it went through sixteen forty and around through phase one and back through the fire line of the fire lane access and then out again. But now we're seeing that you're going to have a gate. So I don't understand why, how her proposal is even valid anymore, since we're going to have a gate there and we're going to use that fire line, fire lane access. Our students actually do. Our kindergartners are picked up along that road where you guys would have that gate. That's where they're currently being picked up. And so we would have to change everything that has already been approved by UDOT if this goes into effect. It was a bit concerning when I I was I've been assistant director and a sixth grade teacher when Mrs. Mullen came over to the school because she wanted me to say and us to say, hey, we'll give you approval for this. And we're like, we don't have authority to give approval for this, but just give me something in writing. And I'm like, we don't have authority to do that. This is a state charter board thing. This is a UDOT thing. This is not something we can do as employees of the school. And the land is actually currently in litigation. And so even our board doesn't have the authority to do that. So her, I just felt a bit pressured and misrepresented because then she said we approved it and her.
And where you reside?
My name is BJ Taylor. I actually reside in Salem, but I am a board member on the school. And like y'all, this is a service thing for me. I don't get paid for this. I'm just here because I care. Now, you mentioned that you guys have to make sure that they are meeting all the requirements. Well, as I understand it, Title fourteen requires that they have a certain number of parking spaces, right? Well, when Melanie Mullen came to our school the other day, well, came to our board meeting the other day and was giving our plans, we pointed out that there's these parking spaces right here and and right here that are backing out into traffic, especially during our pickup and drop-off. And this is, this is where she was wanting us to drive right up and down these areas. And she's and there are cars that can't get out there during those times. And I ask you, you know, does that by any means really fit the in the intention of Title fourteen? If I when we point that out to her, her response was, oh, I'm sure people will just learn not to use those parking spaces. Does that actually meet the needs then of the of the people who live in these townhomes and in these condos and these places if they can't even use those parking spaces because of the traffic flow? I would say not. This is this, this is done to meet the letter only of the law and not at all the intention of the law. And I I do not think that, especially this area right here, this is where she wanted us to be to drop off the kindergarten kids. Can you imagine kids on one side of the road getting out of their cars and then on the other side of the road, a car pulling out without being able to see in their rearview mirror whether or not a kid is there at that moment? That is seems like a disaster to me, and I just do not understand how how they can look at that and say, oh, well, people will just not use those parking spaces. Anyway, I I actually am quite, I was, when I learned about this project, I was excited to know that there was going to be condos and townhomes here. Under different circumstances, that would be a great thing for a school because kids would be coming to the school from those places most likely. Unfortunately, every time they talk to us, and they have talked to us, but every time they talk to us, they just disregard any input that we give them. And it's been a kind of frustrating experience. We've really tried to work with them, and it just hasn't gone anywhere. And I just am kind of speechless as for how we can make this proceed in such a way that would actually be safe for the kids and good for the school and good for the community. And we don't want to have, and nobody wants to live in a place that doesn't have enough parking because they built it in such a way that nobody can use those parking spaces. Nobody wants to do that. And they're not going to tell people who buy these places, oh, well, you know, I'm, that's okay. Nobody needs those parking spaces. You have enough as is. Why even have Title fourteen if we're just going to tell people not to use those parking spaces? It just doesn't make sense. Anyway, my time's up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, do we have additional public comments?
My name is Brandy Dial. I'm a teacher at Treecide. I live in Springville, but I'm a teacher at Treecide. I've also been a parent there since the beginning of the school, so I've experienced carpool both as a parent and a teacher. It's taken us five years to get a great system down where parents understand now how long it's going to take to pick up children. And I'll tell you that I I'm a kindergarten teacher, so we dismiss our kids about fifteen minutes early for safety. Parents who only have kindergarten children can come and pick up their child and then exit so that the traffic flow continues. If you are, our general first through sixth graders are released at three thirty. If you come to pick up your child at three thirty, generally, it takes twenty to thirty minutes for you to get your child and be able to exit the parking lot. So my concern is number one, that the plan presented to the administration was not what I see here. Also, it was, this was brought up before. The other concern that I have is the residents of that complex, having lived in other complex complexes in Provo, there's never enough visitor parking. So I can see our 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 parking lot being used for visitor parking. During the school day, a lot of our parking spots are used between parents and teachers and visitors. And I can see that that could possibly be a problem, especially where those parking spots that interfere with our carpool aren't feasible. Anyway, that's, those are my main concerns for this project and and the proposal. So hopefully, the developer will come up with something that is that they share with both of us that makes sense for for safety.
Quick question, when, what time do students get dropped off?
They can be dropped off at eight twenty. We open the doors, the cafeteria doors for breakfast for children. So there are usually people waiting between eight-ten and eight-twenty, and then school begins at at eight forty-five, the bell rings, so.
Thank you. Okay, I think there was at least one more quick comment.
My name is Chris Wardle. I own Mountain Valley Investments. So in the traffic plan, my only concerns are.
You have a pointer if you want to.
There's a property right here, and if you actually zoom out, but I don't really want to use too much of my time. If you zoom out, there's a giant two-acre property right here that we've been into the city, I don't know, twenty times over the last two years, trying to get something approved to build there. And the traffic, what the city currently wants is commercial, and so two-point-two acres of traffic. Right? And and then I've been on the phone with UDOT about getting this approved and 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 I'll get ahold of UDOT tomorrow and make sure that they're aligned. And I do agree with this gentleman's comments. It was Brandon, right? Brandon's comments of, you know, like approval with that, you know, to meet these recommendations. But I would also like it noted that it needs to meet the overall plan. So not knowing where this road goes, this could be beneficial to the entire development. And and like I said, there's, there's an entire two-acre parcel. And then the gentleman over here to my right own a half acre on the side of me. So it's actually sitting right here. This, that green box right there, I own that, and I am currently developing it, and we have funding. We're just waiting on approvals, and then they own this right here. And we're also showing that road comes down here, and I don't. And we're also showing that road comes down here and I don't get where it would go to. That's why I asked my question and interrupted your meeting. I can't see where it would go to standing there. It's a dead end road where I think, you know, it's, it's, it's put in to facilitate the traffic out of here, which is great. What I'm worried about and my concern that I would like you find folks to review is people will go anywhere. Traffic will go anywhere. Moms and minivans will go anywhere. I'm trying to foresee the future problems and say that the design, if we could go back to the design part, I, I feel like 95% of it is there. Like I feel like all this is great, but if this gate closes, I would say there'd need to be the addition of a gate here so that those people can't come into the commercial development. But if it does being commercial, I don't want to block off customers. I just want to block off school traffic. We've all seen in elementary school at 8:00 AM, we've all been there. So like if I get a soda shop over here, that'd be great. If I get a car wash, I'm now adding a line on top of a line on top of a line. And so somewhere I would like to see some coordination and making this actually all flow so that we don't end up in here. And, and as simple as a comment to work this out with surrounding properties and the rest of it, I actually know meets the, the zone change. And so I would like to task you guys to say, hey, there needs to be at least a comment to where the, the traffic pattern, again, these people here and then 8:00 AM here, again, could create customers for future people. But, and then we put an ambulance in the middle of that. I just don't know where it all goes together. You folks have a wonderful evening.
Hi, Erin, Erin Preston. I'm the attorney for Treeside Charter School. You rightly brought up that you were in charge of code compliance, Provo code compliance. There are some things that you are in charge of determining whether or not traffic complies, whether or not fire lane access complies. And I should, I would like to suggest that whether or not students are safe should always fall within your purview as it should with every public employee. This is not safe. So you talked about your code compliance. We also have the school's code compliance. So to be able to open as a school, we had to go through a really extensive approval process for an e-occupancy school. We had to get permission from UDOT. We have to get permission from the state fire marshal, state board of education, state charter board. We had to go through about five layers of engineering and planning. And we also had to have a traffic plan and study before we could go in. If any of those are altered, the school can be closed. This, trying to orient it into the right way. So this is the plan that was passed that gave us the ability to operate as a school. That's all. Everything else is something that's been added since then and it changes this plan. One thing that I think is really important, well, one other part, they said that everything had been settled in the original zoning, but it, things have been changed. I didn't get the information. It's been really hard to get the information on this. I didn't get the information on what was being put before you guys until after five o'clock last night. One of the things I noticed is that in this original plan that was submitted to Provoc City Council in the zoning, the first area to be developed was kind of in back of the school. Wait, I have a pointer. It was back here. And so we had some hope that, okay, we'll have time to come up with the traffic plan. And by the way, when everybody speaks about this going for three years, they still don't have a viable traffic plan. Isn't that important to have worked out? But in the first phase, yeah, this was going to be built here and we thought, well, we'll, we are relatively safe here. However, as you can see, and I saw last night after 5:30 at night, this is a different plan. This has this being built first. That means construction traffic, resident traffic and everything go through the school's only entry and exit. They go against our one way. And there's no plan for those things. The last thing I would say is that the development plan, which is also contingent upon the development plan references and relies on a cross-access easement granted by the developer of our school. In 2017, Treeside signed a lease, a 25 year, a 25 year lease that gave us exclusive access. What he has given you access to through the easement, and that's Mike Morley. He's given away something he has already sold to us. He does not have the right to give that away. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Robert Jeffs, I'm attorney for the developer. There's a couple of things I need to correct that was stated by council. First off, I contacted the attorney that's representing, that's handling the litigation that was just referenced. Has nothing to do with access issues. It's not before and it's not before the, this planning commission. Second, statement was made that the state school, charter schools has to approve their traffic plan. That's also not correct. Let me read the email from the executive director of the chart, state charter, charter schools. We allow for local control, meaning the local school. And as such, do not approve or register carpool or traffic plans. A school's governing board would likely have to approve it depending on the school's policies and procedures. Such decisions are handled locally. We do not get involved. Contrary to what council said, they handle their own traffic plan. This would not result in any failure of their charter school to be able to operate as represented. The traffic, and most importantly, even though it's not before the planning commission, all of the issues that are raised tonight were raised at the city council level and are in the minutes of the city council when it approved and adopted the development plan that set forth the specific criteria that needed to be adopted by the developer, which they have, which the planning staff has reviewed and approved and it's in conformity with the development agreement and in conformity with the ordinances. So based on that, we would ask that you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I would like to get the Provo traffic engineer to talk a little bit about Spring Creek Road and where that goes and what the options are there.
I don't know that we have the Provo city traffic engineer here. I believe we have the applicant's traffic engineer. I can't tell you. I just looked. Staff just helped me access the map and, and it goes, goes from, from here, it'll go all the way down under 16, 1860 South and connect with Tracy Hall, Tracy Hall Boulevard.
Underpass there now.
Yeah.
2000 South.
Can you go to the aerial?
And then it'll also go up this way all the way till it hits 11.
So.
Yeah.
Goes along the railroad tracks like it does up where we've seen it on the site plan. Underneath Lakeview Parkway to what used to be called Larson Parkway. It's now called Tracy Hall Parkway. And 2000 South, that intersection.
So the underpasses.
Intersection right by the railroad tracks.
Yeah.
But it, you can't see it on this map, but the road would come out a way in a line with the intersection further up.
Okay.
Up on the north end, it keeps going until it gets to about a, to, it will connect with 1140 South and then head out towards State Street.
It's built through Blackstone. Willow Creek will build it in probably this summer. At such point, it will be connected to 1640. So probably sometime in the end of this year, you'll be able to go north all the way up to 1320.
Is 1320 where Spring Creek Park is?
Yeah, 1320 is already connected to the Blackstone.
I'm just trying to figure out where.
That's where the signal is.
Just south of the park? It goes through the middle of that development? Okay.
The parks at 1140.
For the Provo school district.
Right there. So there's a light there. That's the one that goes across. Perfect.
Oh, there we go. So this would come out, connect up here. That currently goes from right here all the way up and around. When, when Willow Creek gets connected, it will connect all the way to 1640. And that should be probably the fall of this year.
Okay.
The land owned by the city going all the way down, is that what you're waiting for future developments to connect that through under that bridge?
Where, where are you talking about?
Pointing down and it would go under the bridge, correct, at 1860?
On Lakeview.
So part of that the city owns, part of it is railroad. And 2000 is a city street. So all, all of this that's being built with this development will be on a dedicated city road.
Okay. Thank you. I think there's a question. Commissioner Jensen?
Yeah, I just wanted to verify, even though that road goes all the way through, it's just a two lane neighborhood road, right? It's not a.
It's a local road. It's not a collector.
Collector or arterial.
It'll be a 36 foot asphalt pavement width, which is a local width that allows for parking on both sides and two lanes of traffic, one going north and one going south.
Thank you.
Just to be clear on this, the gentleman here, who knows way more than I ever know. It would connect here and go to here, right?
Correct.
And this street is installed.
Yes.
Right? So it would actually connect.
See where that spur, you can see the dirt south of, of the Lakeview Parkway. Where that dirt goes. Yeah.
Okay. That's not our issue though, so we need to.
That's the old railroad spur that used to go down into Ironton, but it's no longer used.
Okay. That's good information. Getting back on track. Questions? I think we want to let the applicant come back and answer any questions that might have come up because of the public comment. And then thank you, Mr. Day.
You also have an amazing traffic engineer here that is hired by the developer that can answer.
We might want to hear from him too.
UDOT questions, how they've been coordinating with that signal and all of those issues.
Okay.
Chair, just one second. Chair, I'm not sure you closed the public comments section.
Okay. Do we have somebody who wants to make another public comment? Okay. Sorry. If you'll just take one minute and then, or three minutes.
Hi, I'm April Clausen and I live in Mapleton. I'm the school board chair for Treeside. I would like to request an extension on this for a couple of weeks so that we can address all the issues and you can address our concerns through our emails that we've sent you. Thank you.
All right. Another public, okay.
Hi, I'm Linda Dahl. I live in Springville, but I teach at Treeside Charter School. It was mentioned that there's a possibility of having overflow parking on State Street. That street has had so many accidents. Some of our families have been involved in accidents and I just, I don't know. It's something that is a concern also. I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Christine Reiser and I'm the music teacher at Treeside and I help with dismissal every day. I also live just about three blocks from Treeside, more north. And I don't really know how UDOT or traffic has approved or how they've approved and what they're going to do to change some things. But that stoplight is, I don't know how many feet from Treeside. So you're going to have backup issues. You're going to have problems getting onto the road. Every day I go and I leave my house, it is very dangerous. So I'll go the back way and I'll go to the light. Leaving the school or getting to the school, getting in that turning lane, you've got 50 mile an hour traffic going both ways. And yeah, I mean, we, we see accidents quite often. So to me, that is like a main concern. What is the forward thinking here with traffic? With, you know, possibility, like he said, let's keep an ambulance parked in the parking lot, you know, kind of thing. I think that's what I heard, but I'm not sure. But that's, that to me is really the scariest thing. And then basically the parking issues. Because right now I might find one space if I leave for lunch left for me to park in back at work. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. I don't see any more public content, comments. So we will close that and then Commissioner Jensen will summarize a letter that we have received from the Provo Fire and Rescue, from the fire commissioner. So you've got that information that we just received.
So this is in response to the letters that the fire marshal received today. And he said, the plan submitted for review on March 12th, 2022 is acceptable for fire department access under the code. The construction of the proposed project will be required to abide by the code. Treeside Charter School falls under the jurisdiction of the Utah State Fire Marshal. They have reviewed and given tentative approval to the access plan. The rest of the Remington Commons has been given tentative approval by the Provo City Fire Marshal. And he believes that the addition of a traffic signal at 1640 South State Street will improve the overall safety for the entire site. So he concludes with, based on my review as well as the review of others, there's no fire code or fire access issue that would prevent this project from moving forward.
Thank you. All right. We will let the applicant respond and then move on.
Sure. The planning commission knew that we had done actually five traffic studies with different focuses depending on who asked for the study. So not, we didn't come up with five conclusions. We came up with the same conclusion each time, but with the focus on different aspects. So I don't, I don't know what else to tell you on the traffic. It's, it will work itself out once the development is completed and we have enough traffic to go back and say, this is how much traffic we really have. At that point, UDOT could possibly change their mind. Right now they're saying there's not enough warrants to justify the signal. We're convinced that there will be once the development is completed. So.
Okay. And you're willing to enter into the agreement?
Yes.
That commits you to help support that financially?
And I don't know the exact percentage, but it's 40 something percent.
Okay. And you have a traffic engineer here with you tonight?
Yeah. And, and I'm sure he didn't want to come up, but I'll get him to come up anyway.
Okay. I want to give the commissioners a chance to ask you some questions. So.
Of course. Josh Givens with Hales Engineering. So what questions do you have?
Thank you. Okay. Do you have?
I'll, I'll ask a couple. Just no one else is asking. Have you personally met with any of the, the families and parents and student leadership, parent leadership at Treeside Charter?
We have not. No, we, we completed the traffic impact study for the development. We did not meet with the, the school, though, though I will say our company did complete the original traffic study for the school back in 2017.
Were you able to review any of their letters or concerns?
I, I didn't see those. No, I, I wasn't. Yeah.
And I have a third one, but I'll let someone else go.
Yeah. Just a quick question then on that. The main thoroughfare for the kids and the parents coming in to drop people off at Charter School, is that being widened? I don't know if I missed that or not, but.
Yeah, that right there.
Is that being widened or is that staying? Okay. I didn't know if it had said it, said so or not. I thought it had. That, that's what I thought it said too, but I don't know.
Is that in there or is it on sixteen forty?
No, there's improvements obviously along Spring Creek Drive and also along-
Yeah, I might have misunderstood that then.
Okay, and-
Commissioner Knutson just pointed out that number two on the Public Works staff report says that the, they, UDOT is recommending that they widen the north side of their access, so the driveway, to provide for better entrance movements. In other words, eliminate the constriction to allow for three entrance lanes. So that seems to me that there would be another lane added there.
That's what I read, yeah. But where, where's the other lane then? At, at the entrance then, where they're coming in and out?
It was on the north.
Just to make sure. Okay, cool.
Um, are you aware, are, are there any plans to put a turn lane there? Um, I don't know how long we have, how long the turn lane is on State Street.
You're talking the right turn lane here?
Yes, coming in.
Yeah, it's my understanding they're, they're working with UDOT to, um, to make that, you know, the, the length that UDOT needs. Um, so I believe that's, that's the plan. As part of the study, we identified some additional turn lanes, or one, one additional turn lane off of uh, this road, of course, just because right now it's very narrow. So that was one, um, recommendation, at least with that. Um, yeah, any other questions?
Is, just overall, your firm, um, it's your opinion that the flow would work? Um, as it, they, I know they're saying they have a one-way right away along. Um, I guess it's the east side of their parking lot. Um, is that to be maintained or?
Yeah, maybe I could explain that a little bit. I think there's been some confusion. So, um, the thought with this, of course, we've talked about the gate quite a bit. Um, the purpose of that is to not mix, um, that residential traffic with the school traffic, right? And by closing that gate during those times, that allows the school to, um, they can, they can come off of sixteen forty on a Spring Creek, come in, drop off. There, there may need to be some additional modifications somewhere to allow those parents to, uh, turn back around and come back on Spring Creek and out on sixteen forty to a future-
There, is there enough, um, space there for two cars, um, on the lane in the back?
To my understanding, there is, and that, that's what was proposed when we did the study.
Okay.
Yeah, um, the, there would, this would still be open for cars exiting, of course, to make a right turn out, um, just so they don't have to go back all the way through here. Um, but, uh, the future traffic signal location, that'll be a safer spot for them to make a left turn out. Obviously, it's very difficult to make a left turn out during those peak hours. It's, it takes a long time. Um, and there, there was mention of, you know, several crashes that have happened on State Street. I'm not, I'm not aware of the exact numbers personally, but, um, that traffic signal would hopefully improve that left turn, uh, safety to get, uh, cars out. Um, and while, while I'm talking about the traffic signal, the traffic signal is, it's on UDOT's corridor agreement for State Street, which means it's planned to be a future signal at some point when warranted. Um, in our study, we, we found that, um, during those peak hours, we, we estimate that it will meet what we call a peak hour warrant, um, with both the project and assuming that the school reroutes up to sixteen forty south. Um, UDOT, they did their own study to look at that. They, they did not reroute the school traffic. Um, I think they just misunderstood what the rerouting was gonna be. So UDOT found that, they said it was not warranted. Um, so at this stage, UDOT's not planning to put a signal there soon. Um, but later on, as, you know, as the area develops, if the school reroutes to sixteen forty, uh, that could be a chance for UDOT to study it again for a signal. But it, it will be a signal at some future date, yeah.
Okay.
But I have a couple of follow-up questions.
Okay, and, um, I'm going to let Commissioner Kendall ask hers and then you can ask yours.
Thanks. Can you address the concern about the parking on the kindergarten drop-off? And the parking on the east side where traffic is gonna be going, but yet those people are, might be trying to get out of their parking spots?
Yeah, so I, you know, I, I wasn't aware where the kindergarten drop-off was. It sounds like they currently drop off in the cul-de-sac area. Um, sounds like one proposal was they drop off here. Um, you know, i- it's true that, uh, you know, this will be very busy during those peak hours. Um, these stalls there, I mean, um, I, I imagine that the demand for people coming and going to those stalls will be very minimal for those, um, peak twenty minutes for the school, well, it sounds like half an hour plus where the school is very busy. Um, so I don't, I don't anticipate a lot of conflict just because the, the likely, likelihood of someone, um, backing out of here is somewhat low during that peak hour. Um, but, uh, I guess that could be considered to see if there's a different spot on site to accommodate stalls, yeah.
Okay, and then Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yeah, have you, have you done any, um, in your prior experience, have you reviewed traffic plans for schools, elementary schools and charter schools before? Yeah, and, and- And are you, are you familiar with additional requirements that the, uh, there, there was a comment earlier, the, the charter, state charter school board has additional traffic plan requirements. Are you familiar with additional requirements? I'm not familiar with that, so I can't speak to that. Um, but we have, we worked for a lot of schools, you know, just like we did the study for this school a few years ago. So, um, for example, with every school, we, we do an onsite queuing analysis to estimate how far back the queue is gonna go. Um, so as part of, um, this school, for example, um, we had recommended they add that third lane, uh, when we did the study, which, I mean, they have done. Um, so that was one recommendation to give them more storage on site. Um, and, uh, as we did this study, um, UDOT, specifically, um, Doug Bassett at UDOT, he, he asked us to look at the queuing, uh, backing up from the school, uh, to State Street. Cause he, it sounds like he, he's observed that sometimes it does back up on the State Street, which is concerning for UDOT at times. Um, when we were out there, we didn't see a backup on the State Street. It, it came pretty close, um, but didn't quite back up on the State Street. Um, our hope is that routing the traffic around the back will give more, um, queue storage, um, so that it does not, uh, back up on the State Street more, um, that frequently, so.
Okay, any other questions?
Also, yeah, it looks, it looks like if someone was really in a pickle, they could just cut through the development, right? Um, it, where- On the east side of the development through- You're saying through here or? There's nothing that would prohibit someone from just kind of corners going through there. I don't, I don't think, I, I can't remember if there were plans to put another gate over here. I, I don't believe so, possibly. Um, they could, you know, we, we try to make it so people don't have to do that, of course. Um, but, uh, yeah.
Commissioner Jensen has another question.
Do you, from what I'm seeing, the, the gate solves most of the through-traffic problem, but what is the plan for the phase one on the southeast side? Because if there's a gate there and we're trying to keep these people out of the school area, what is the ingress egress plan for those, those units?
Oh, you're saying over here?
Yeah.
So-
How do they get out without crossing over the school?
Yeah, so they, they would not, I mean, they wouldn't be able to go through here when the school is, is busy or, you know, and picking up or dropping off. Um, they would all have to reroute, you know, or go through here, which most of the time they'll do anyway. That's the closest, um, spot to access State Street. Um, and, uh, I mean, they'll have to wait, but that's probably faster for them to go there instead of coming through the development out to this future signal.
How many units are those, just in that bottom corner? Does somebody have that number?
There's, um, I believe there's fifteen townhomes and fifteen studios.
So it's the least dense of all of them, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
I'm sorry that we, public comment. Yeah, okay. All right, um, we will move on to deliberation by the commissioners. Do you have comments? Okay, um, Commissioner Jensen?
Um, I first want to share my experience with, um, my children attending an elementary school on a busy road. And then I just have some things, so this will just kind of help us to think about, um, how this can happen. So, my children attended Provost Elementary, which is, um, right off of State Street and, and nine hundred east and has notoriously long queue lines and quite a few parents who drive despite it being a neighborhood school. And there's pickup in the front and in the back. Um, the back street is a very narrow street with driveways on it. And there's a crossing guard and the children have been taught that they cross at the crosswalk. And everybody meets at that corner and crosses at the crosswalk. And, um, it's part of the, the culture at the beginning of the year that the, the administration and the teachers teach the kids how to, you know, a letter goes home to parents saying this is the driving pattern, this is where you're okay to let your kids off. Please do not let them off on the east side of the street, let them off on the west side of the street so that they're on the sidewalk. Don't go against traffic, don't double park, all these things that sometimes parents forget because their kids are late for school. Um, and in the front, they have developed a double, um, a double road that goes past the drop-off curb so that the ones that are adjacent to the curb are the ones that can get out of the car. And the ones that are on the inner road are the ones that are driving through so that you don't have to stay in the queue if you're done with your drop-off. Um, there's also a crossing guard who's a school staff member, so like the music teacher said, she helps with that. Um, that helps to make sure that, that children only access their parents' vehicles either directly from the curb or at that crosswalk so that we don't have kids walking through the parking lot to cars that are further down in the line or whatever. Um, having watched that for eighteen years, um, it works. And I know it's a pain and I know that, um, new development surrounding it is difficult, but I don't feel super stressed about what I see here because it says to me that it would have to change, but that it's not impossible. And, um, sometimes it means you have to drive around the school like you do at Provost so that you're on the right side of the curb to drop off, which, which would be possible with these new roads. So I feel like the development, yes, it's bringing more traffic, but it's also bringing infrastructure that enables greater access so that your only approach does not have to be backing up on the State Street and, and worrying about that minimal access on that east side. I feel like it opens opportunities, maybe the developer would need to, um, expand that fire lane to be a, a bigger road so that that access could be a safer option or a realistic option. But I personally am not, I feel like Spring Creek Drive is a huge asset to the pickup and the drop-off access. Um, I feel like the ingress concerns are being addressed very well by UDOT suggestions and by Public Works. I love the fact that sixteen forty would probably warrant a light because when I've seen the, the cars back up there at pickup and drop-off times, making a left turn would be scary, in or out. And so to have a light that would enable that just, uh, gives me peace of mind even as a neighbor, not even as a patron of the school. So I think that's a great asset. Uh, I feel like the student safety issues would be resolved by these crossing guards that should be required, I think, by state anyway. Um, and no school pedestrians should be in conflict with these developments, with the development road. And the gate being there as an idea is, that's, that's even an added bonus. Provost has lots of traffic in and out and on all sides and there's never been anyone saying we have to close this road. So I feel like that's a great olive branch, in my opinion, that the developer's offering, they, um, that gives you guys a little bit more safety, that gives the, the school a little bit more safety. The only concern I have is the vehicles moving, um, from that southeast corner to the light at sixteen forty if they needed to make a left-hand turn. Um, but I feel like that will be minimal at first and will iron itself out when development to the south eventually happens because there'll be an additional way for them to get to Spring Creek Drive without going through the school. Um, some, my concerns about the gate, who opens and closes the gate? And then to both sides of it, the left turn at that light on sixteen forty helps both properties and I would question that you wouldn't want to have that gate gone so that the parents, I guess if they can, from Spring Creek Drive, but, um, insisting on a gate there means the parents have to go all the way around to access that light, to make left turns as opposed to being able to access it more immediately through that middle road. Um, those are my concerns. I feel like, um, this pro, this proposal meets the requirements in the zone and I recognize that the concerns are real, but I feel like the bodies that are, um, watching over it are, are doing, will work, the, the process will work. And if the, if the school has to make a few changes to their routing plan and has to have a few extra crossing guards, that's just part of change, no matter what came in here, I feel like that would be something, so, um, those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Okay, other comments? Commissioner Kendall?
So I, I just still have questions, because our job is to make sure that the requirements have been met and one of them is parking stalls, having enough parking stalls. And that's little section there, the fire lane with the parking on the other side of it, that does concern me about being a drop-off area and I'm not seeing another good way to manage that. Um, to say that cars will not want to exit at that time from their parking stall, to me, that means that it's not an effective parking stall. We've all been to In-N-Out parking lot and you can't get out of your parking stall when In-N-Out is busy. And I just, I think that needs to be addressed. So that's about eighteen parking spots, is that right, in that section? Is there another place to put those parking spots to alleviate that concern so that we still have the adequate number of parking stalls?
Um, Brandon, I, how many stalls are they saying and how many are required?
They need three, they're saying they need three seventy-eight. Uh, well, I'm saying they need three seventy-eight or the code does and they have three seventy-eight. They're right at that.
They're right at the number, okay. But that includes that eighteen.
Whether they can be somewhere else, I, um, I don't know if you have any other comments. I know there was another spot discussed, but I don't know.
Now, there is no accommodation for transit, um, alternatives? It's, we're just going straight with whatever?
Yeah, there was no reduction, you know, of course, the code provides for a, a reduction, uh, a TDM plan, trans, transit or, uh, transportation demand management plan. They haven't asked for that, they've just met the requirement. Um, so they, they could seek something like that to reduce the number of parking stalls. They've also looked at other, uh, other places where they could, uh, put those if that doesn't work, so they, they probably could speak-
Would a TDM require them to come back?
Yeah, there, there's, uh, we haven't looked at that. There's, there's kind of a laundry list of things to look at, so.
Okay. Thank you. Other comments from commissioners?
I guess I'll just echo one of Lisa's comments that like, any problem we'd have, we'd have with anything coming in, in here north or south of this property, which makes me wonder like why, how did this school get approved there in the first place? Knowing that commercial or medium-density residential or high-density residential is contemplated. But I, I've, I've personally worked with UDOT before on, on projects and, and I know their, their process is quite rigorous where they contemplate, uh, safety and, and management where we've had to alter plans that we didn't want to, to alter to, to accommodate their requirements. Um, so I, I place a lot of faith in that.
Brandon, do you have information about the width of the fire lane?
I don't, not right off, um. I thought, in my recollection, it may not be correct, I thought it was somewhere in the neighborhood of twelve, uh, twelve feet that lane, but, uh, I, I don't recall clearly.
Okay, twelve.
And-
Oh, and you can kind of tell, I mean, the parking stalls are eighteen feet deep and you can kind of tell- And you can kind of tell, I mean, the parking stalls are 18 feet deep and you can kind of tell it's a little bit bigger than that.
You're, you're right.
20 feet is the same width. And as you go east around the corner down towards the school, that lane is as it is today at 20 feet. So, which is, which allows two way flow now. So it's the same. It would be the same width as it is today on that side.
Okay. So 20 feet does allow for a car to back out and not get into the other lane where a car would be parked dropping off. Is that correct?
Yeah. In theory, I guess that would work, but I can see that being an issue and and I could see a need for coordination with crossing guards or other ways to kind of arrange that if somebody does need to leave. But yeah, I don't see those as being functional during that pickup and drop off time as parking spots. So that that is one, one concern that I, I hope the developer is, is very concerned and aware of that. Other comments? Are we ready for a motion? Okay, any other comments? I'm not seeing any. So. Okay.
Maybe this is a question for the commissioners. Are the concerns that we've heard and maybe the confusion about traffic information, is that something worthy of a continuance? Does anyone on the commission feel that that needs to be addressed? Or do we feel that the, that the conditions would address that?
I'd be okay with, with a continuance, but I also think that the conditions probably do address it.
That's a good question. I I don't know that, I don't know that I can clearly tell you that, that the conditions that we proposed. I don't think I can tell you that it's going to address that issue. So. That's, so I think that the other issues are resolved, but that one, I don't think that, that there's a condition that addresses that.
Okay. I feel like that's, that's my only hang up on making a motion. I feel like most of the school concerns should be addressed by, by the parameters that UDOT and the city engineers have set forth. The one thing that I found concerning was the comment by the engineer that assuming that the school reroutes this, this way, that to me just sounds like conversations and clarification are still needed. And I know when there's animosity or time constraints or whatever it may be, sometimes information doesn't get shared the way we want it to, but it, it, it seems like information was out there for people. But if it in fact needs to have further conversation, I just don't know how safe school routes factors into the approval of something or if that's something that becomes a condition of approval.
Did you want to speak to that?
Keith Moore from Development Services. So just maybe a point of clarification. I think you've heard, you know, there's been the required traffic analysis done for this project. And all of our public works people have signed off that the traffic demands have been addressed by the street designs and the exits out on the state streets and things of that sort. The future traffic analysis that would need to be done would just be on UDOT's part to determine whether or not and when they feel like a signal is appropriate to be put in. So it really doesn't have anything to do with whether or not this project should or could be approved. That's kind of a future condition that they'll have to evaluate and they'll make the determination on. This fire lane that you're talking about meets the city standard. And so, you know, what you've been presented with, although you've heard different people express concerns about people backing out, our public works department has reviewed it and approved it. The fire department has approved it and said that they think that it works and it's okay. And so although you may think that there's an issue to resolve or that the developer needs to be sensitive, that's not really necessarily a condition. And I'm not telling you, you should or shouldn't continue this item for whatever reason. But I don't know that there's anything necessarily that could be presented that would change our position of what's already presented. We're okay with. I mean, I guess if you continue it, then the developer wants to. He could evaluate another alternative, but that would be at his discretion if he wants to. If he doesn't want to, exactly the same thing is going to come back because we're okay with it the way it is and it meets our standards. So I, I just think actually your comments about future, you know, pedestrian interaction or whatever is really an obligation for private property owners to resolve between the school and how it functions and the residents and the, and the developer, the project. But it's not a requirement for the site plan to be approved. So.
Might I add also that the number of these things, maybe all of these issues were addressed at the site plan process rezone. They were addressed with the council. The development agreement even specifically addresses the fire access. It, it, there, there's provisions in, in the development agreement related to that fire access easement. It says that in here specifically, the fire access drive on the north side of the property currently leased by Treeside will be extended to the west to connect Spring Creek Drive, as you see. Developer will pave the unpaved portion of that drive. Treeside and the project shall have equal access to use of that drive. In the event the developer is unable to obtain the right to equal access to that drive, the developer will design and construct and pave to the Provo City standards an additional, an additional drive immediately to the north alongside of the Treeside access drive. So I mean, this issue really was addressed already at the rezone phase and there is something in the, in the development agreement related to it. So. And Keith is correct that, that they do meet the, the standard and, and they have a 20 foot drive, 25 foot, 20 foot fire access road and it meets our standards. So that's, that's what I guess we can say on that, staff.
Okay. So the question before us is, does this design plan fit within the constraints of the medium density residential zone?
I'll tell you what I love about it. I love that they're not asking for a parking reduction. I love that there are even some hidden spots in there that aren't being counted as spots as I asked about the driveways. I love that the amenity space is way more than what is required and that it's on both ends. Initially, I thought it was just on that southeast end, but it's also in the middle. I feel like it's a nice livable community for the people that are, that are living there. And as to that fire lane, I feel like the people that are going to be affected most negatively by that are the people that are parking there and not necessarily the people that are driving there. Because once again, education, if those children are taught that they get out curbside and not roadside, the conflicts will be from the people driving, backing out. And I was at a school this morning where I was helping out as a parent and I backed out as school was getting out and I had to get out of my car and ask somebody if they could pull forward so I could move. And it was annoying, but I'm not going to park there tomorrow when I go help with the school again. Like it, it'll, there'll be wrinkles, but I don't feel like that has to be an indefinite safety issue. So I, I love so many things about this project and I love that it is a high end project, which will meet as a slightly different demographic need in that part of the city. So there's some positives about it for you.
I agree with that. And I, my children also went to a charter school. So I, I value charter schools and I value the, the resource that they are for the community. And I do think that the school that my kids went to expanded and traffic was a mess for a couple of months because people were going crazy ways. And then it got worked out. But it does take a while to get some of those things done sometimes. But I, I agree. I, I like the fact that this is a higher end and I do think that, that I think it's going to be something that's really desirable for the medical students and, and some others that are in that area. And so I, I do think that the asset to the Spring Creek neighborhood, as the chair mentioned, makes a difference. Do we have other commissioner comments? Okay.
Can you tell me, Mr. Gardner, who closes and opens said gate? I just want to make sure this is a realistic condition.
Yes, it will be Don Mullen or he'll assign it to me. But the developer will be in charge of that. And developers staying in the project, this is a combination sales and long-term ownership. So some of the apartment units, the goal of the developer is to keep those sell the rest. And so he'll be involved long-term.
Okay. So there will be a property manager there that will be doing that?
Are we comfortable with that?
I am. Okay.
Okay, Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion.
Please.
I would move that we approve item number one. George Bills of Gardner and Associates requests project plan approval for 204 new residential units in the medium density residential zone located approximately 1702 South State Street in the Spring Creek neighborhood. With the conditions that the outstanding CRC comments be resolved prior to the building permit application approval. Number two, that the associated final subdivision plat be recorded prior to building permit application approval. Number three, that the improvement agreement with the public works department to address the traffic improvements be solidified. And just as a general idea, Mr. Gardner said that was about 40% ish that they would be paying for of that improvement. And then number four, that that gate location be specified. So I guess we only have three. So with those three conditions.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
A second in by Commissioner Knutson? Do we have any discussion on the motion? Seeing then, we will move to the vote. Commissioner Anderson?
I'm going to abstain.
Aye.
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 All right. Thank you. That was five in favor and one abstaining. Okay. All right. We will move on with item number two. The Development Services Department requests an amendment to chapter I, or 15, dot 15 annexation of the Provo City Code relating to the annexation of islands, peninsulas, irregular boundaries, and et cetera. Citywide application and Brandon Larson again has the staff report.
Yes, thank, thank you, Madam Chair. So this is really just a cleanup item here. Got a clicker here I can use. So state code was updated. Not too recent. Well, it looks like it was 2021, spring of 2021. Typically, the, you know, state and city have frowned on peninsulas and, and so forth when it, and oddly shaped annexations, islands. However, the state code's been updated a little bit to add some flexibility into that process. And so this blue highlighted language right here is directly from the state code. And so all this proposal is, is to essentially codify that, that allowance to kind of loosen up the requirements for kind of oddly shaped annexations, peninsulas, islands, just codify that in our own city code. You can see there currently it says no pockets or islands of county jurisdiction shall be left or created and peninsulas and irregular boundaries shall be minimized. So that's just kind of right now it just says that, but now we're adding that, that state allowance there that says that unless you, you meet those five four criteria that it meets the, the state code. It's in our expansion area. So I would interpret that to, to mean like our, our annexation policy plan, our annexation declaration policy plan, which is in the general plan. And so if it's, if the area is in the annexation policy plan, if it's, if it, the specified county agrees to the annexation. And then if it's not in another county or another city's annexation policy plan and the annexation is for the purpose of providing services, then we're proposing that, that we kind of loosen up the requirement and make, align ourselves with the state code. So pretty, pretty straightforward proposal really to, to again line up with the state code. And so staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval to the city council of this proposal.
So this is entirely a harmonization action? Do you have any proposals that would bring this into play?
That's a good question. We just, I don't know if you guys remember the annexation that the East Bay storage annexation that actually finally got recorded today. Or yet?
Just on the other side.
Yep, on the other side. That one did leave a little, little peninsula. So I guess that's an example of probably where maybe should have scrutinized that a bit more. But I I know we've got another annexation just south of there that may be proposed, a wide swath of, of land to bring into the city. That, that probably wouldn't, that, that probably wouldn't come into play. There's another spot over by Provo High School that you may see before long. And I think that, I don't think that one really, would really trigger this one either. It, 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 I can think of other cities like Pleasant Grove and Lehigh have all these little islands that, that are a mess that, that, and I, I'm not personally aware of anything currently that, that that would, this would help. But again, it, we do have one coming down the pike and, and I've seen it. It's pretty rectangular looking and it's, so I, I think it's pretty straightforward. But again, that, that, that could be. Yeah, I can't think of one off the top of my head.
Other commissioners, do you have questions for staff?
Yeah, up until recently municipalities could annex property against a property owner's wishes.
Right.
One of the changes that happened in 2018, I believe, which I think is when this language really went into the state code, took that, that ability away from cities for properties that are one acre in size or larger.
Right.
So now you're left to either create islands and peninsulas in certain cases or you can't proceed with annexations.
Good point.
So it's kind of a catch 22. So as a policy change, I think it makes perfect sense, but I assume this doesn't mean that all of a sudden staff and the city is not going to pay attention to trying to be as functional when boundaries are modified and things like that as you can be. Just have reasonable service areas. But one of the fundamentals that I thought worked great is no longer on the table. So that's, that makes this really important.
You know what? Actually, now that you mention that, I do remember there is an annexation that may come through. Do you remember the, the River Bend Meadows project that was kind of in the bend of Provo River next to the, there's a campground kind of close to Utah Lake State Park. There was M1 and R18 in the same project. There's a proposal related to that that, that may propose a kind of an oddly shaped annexation and that this one would, could benefit from that.
Okay. Yeah, I could see that irregular things might cause issues with putting utilities and other kinds of things in. So.
Yeah.
All right. But state code. Okay, Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yeah. Would it be helpful for the language when it says unless the following criteria, if it's dead set clarified? Because to me it could go either way. Unless each of the following of the following criteria are met, or at least one of the criteria are met? The way I read it is, if it doesn't say each, then it's all of them.
Right.
I can, I mean, I don't know if my statutory interpretation is correct, but.
Actually.
The, the state code doesn't help.
At the end of C, it says and, so that would imply to me that all four are required.
And I'll be honest with you, this language is actually, well.
That's exactly what the state says.
That's exactly what the state code says, and this language is actually given to us by the city attorney's office, to be quite frank.
Yeah, and with this case.
So I think what you're saying, Danny, is that unless the following criteria are met needs to say unless all of the following criteria are met, just as a clarify.
The four.
Yeah.
Well, just in my mind, we're, if we're adopting this, we're, we're agreeing that it's all the four criteria. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Don't see a problem with an addition like that of all the following criteria met.
The city attorney might want to think about.
Yes, exactly. The city attorney will actually look at this before, before the city council, yeah.
Right. Okay, so if we include that as a condition of the, of our approval? Okay. Do we have any public to comment on this? Euler. Okay. Then Commissioner Jensen has a question.
Okay, Dave, you've, you've obviously used this in your office. Commissioner Anderson, would this mean, if all four of those had to be met, what do we do if somebody comes in with an odd-shaped parcel? They just can't be annexed?
Well.
According to this language?
No, you file an application. In our case, we've done this six months. And we don't like it. We don't like creating islands and peninsulas.
Turn your mic on.
We don't like creating islands and peninsulas. I don't think many communities do.
Right.
The part of Utah County that Brandon referenced, I think that, that creates some challenges that don't make sense. So it's a matter of providing a letter to the Utah County Commission. A request goes on a county commission agenda for them to review a proposed annexation that would create an island or a peninsula. They make a decision that I'm aware of, they have not, not denied a request to give the authorization to move forward with an annexation that would do that. And then it's up to ultimately the city council to act on the annexation after everything's been through the process. So I think each of those four criteria, they're coming from the state law, and they all have to be met, or you don't have a valid.
Or you have to ask for an exception. It's a speed bump for the, so the exception is not the rule.
I'm not aware of an exception.
Well, you just said that they have to apply.
Going to the.
Going to the county, the state would be the exception, right?
Not an exception from.
From the governing body.
Meeting those four criteria there.
Yeah, there's no exception.
Okay, got it.
Okay. Are, do we have any comments on the motion? I think if we need to harmonize, we need to harmonize. Well, oh, that's right. Well, the proposal on the issue. On issue number two, do we have any discussion? Or further discussion? All right, are we ready to entertain a motion? And is anyone ready to offer a motion?
I would suggest we make a motion.
We're recommending to the city council.
Making a positive recommendation to the municipal council for item number two. The Development Services Department requests an amendment to chapter 15.15, Annexation of the Provo City Code relating to the annexation of islands, peninsulas, irregular boundaries, et cetera, citywide application. And then we want to make the following.
We want to recommend that the city attorney clarify the language to specify all four.
Yes. Include that in the motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. All right. Any discussion on the motion? We will move ahead with a vote. Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
I vote aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that is unanimous, six, seven votes for. Six, right? Yeah. Okay. Moving on to item number three. The Development Services Department requests an ordinance text amendment to add mixed, add the mixed-use zones as chapter 14.14D and signs permitted in the mixed-use zones as section 14.38.106 to the Provo City Code and amend related development standards with citywide application. And Javon Weaver has the staff report for this.
Thank you. It's been a while since we've been in here. So, and we, a couple months ago, we did, I did a study session regarding mixed-use zones, and I realize some of you were not in attendance there, but I'll go over that really briefly. A lot of our general plan policies discuss having mixed-use zones. Now, general plan does specifically, now the downtown master plan does as well, has locations in it. The Mazur neighborhood, southwest future land use map, Franklin neighborhood, southeast neighborhood, and Milwaukee neighborhood all have areas. There were talks about mixed-use areas. It has areas designated on the future land use maps as mixed-use areas. As we, as I reviewed the, our existing zones that we have, our current zones in our downtown area, DT 12, Gateway West, West Gateway, ITOD, campus mixed-use zones, we can identify that a zone that we have currently existing works for these specific areas where it's called out. The Franklin neighborhood plan specifically says we don't have a plan, we don't have a zone that works for the areas within these neighborhoods. Two relevant policies from the general plan to consider are determine the, I'm starting to hit myself, I apologize. This is going to be a similar type of format for our zone chapter. This is similar to the airport zones, where we have one chapter which includes two zones for ease of use between the two. One is titled mixed use, MU. The other one is called neighborhood mixed use, NMU. One is a higher intensity, one's a lower intensity of use. And to answer a question from our study session, we talked about should we require only vertical mixed use or allow horizontal mixed use? As I drafted, from our discussion, as I drafted in the zone, I said horizontal mixed use is not permitted unless through, through the Development Services Director. So if they're able to prove that something is great and warranted, then we can move forward in that direction. You know, I apologize, I thought I had a slide regarding general plan policies, I apologize on that. One thing that it did say was to determine the appropriate areas, and that's already been done to our neighborhood plans, and to be cognizant of the transition from the neighborhood centers as they're, as these areas are established. Again, having these two zones of higher intensity, lower intensity allows us to be cognizant of how, and how this is going to transition between the two. So this is, these are the permitted uses. These uses are, would be allowed in all of the zones, apartments or condos with a minimum of 10,000 square feet, of commercial component, assisted living facilities, live-work dwelling units, one-family dwellings, police, residential facilities for elderly, religious activities. These uses, now if I'm adjacent to a RCR, R1 zone, then the use shouldn't be as intense as that. So this is what it's saying, that you could have a town home of eight, it could be four. If, you could have one-family dwellings detached adjacent to this, you could have two-family dwellings. Now, if the, if there's a really large site, then it's just this area that's adjacent to these properties. And then the following uses would be permitted as a second story to a commercial, other non-residential use. So if you have apartments or condos or one-family dwelling, you could have a commercial component on the bottom, and your, your living space up on top.
Going back to that, so making sure that I'm reading this right, with the one-family dwelling not to exceed four units is permitted in the mixed use, but no multi fam, no attached townhomes are permitted in the neighborhood mixed use. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then for the mixed use, they don't have the smaller, so they can have four units, but they cannot have more than four units.
For the area adjacent.
That are sharing a wall.
That's only if it is next to a RCR, R1 zone. If it's in a MDR or something, it doesn't, if it's next to one of those, doesn't matter?
If it's next, if it's next to MDR, then it'd be the eight.
Okay, okay.
Now, these are uses that would be allowed as part of a mixed-use development within the same building. As you can see, all of them on screen, banks, daycare services with conditional use, general retail, things that you would customarily find within the neighborhood, that you may find within the neighborhood that you could walk to as a convenience as well. Looking at lot standards. Some of these standards came specifically from some of our existing code regarding our downtown zones for some of the widths and things. These are very similar to existing code that we already have. Similar with the yard requirement, the MU zone is very similar to our downtown zone. Again, this is thinking location-based where this would be. The neighborhood mixed use is really similar to our campus mixed-use zones. Building height, I do want to point out that the campus mixed-use zone is at 75 feet in height, so this is less than that. And our LDR zone is 35 feet, 30 feet, I'm sorry, and R1 is 35. Now, if you have a building, if you're adjacent to a RCR, R1 or RC zone, then the number of height, the height that you could be is 50 feet. Once you go past that, that 50 feet line, then you could, then you could continue to build higher to what the zone would allow. Currently, our transitional standard says if you are adjacent to a RCR1, then it limits the stories, but it does not give that, that, and somewhere with on that, on that parcel. This would. One change is, we're going to say the minimum residential unit size east development shall include a unit size no less than 500, 500 square feet. Currently, within our downtown zones, we say an average of 800. We're not including that in here, we're seeing a minimum of 500 square feet. Now, these, these sections of code come from existing code. Conversion of properties, this is specifically in the West Gateway Zone, I believe. This is discussing properties that are homes that have maybe have significance, that we could see a mix of uses within it, that they could still be repurposed and have that there. Now, we also have properties east Center Street that could do the same thing. Also, if a property is of historic nature, that would take precedence as it goes forward on design. A similar, exact same code for the habitable floor depth, that's at 30 feet, parking loading access is the same, and amenities. Now, the amenities, the campus mixed use talks about, I'm sorry, the, HGR zones talk about having a 20% of amenities, and the LDR, the lower intense zones, had that 10%. And that's similar for these, the mixed-use zone has the 20%, and the, and the neighborhood mixed use has the 10%. Now, there are a couple of changes to this ordinance text since the staff report is written, and I'm going to elaborate this a little bit more. And if you're uncomfortable with this, would like to discuss this, feel free to continue. One thing is, in addition to that minimum residential unit size of 500, I'm saying there shall be an equal amount of studio and one-bedroom units. This is to create a diverse amount of people that could be in there for various, various economic reasons and other reasons.
So does that mean they have to do two if they do any?
It's a great question.
Well, he's saying that there shall be an equal amount of studio and one-bedroom, so that seems that they need to be paired.
If, if there's a home that there's a one-bedroom, then they would be able to do that. That's a great point.
So.
That's great discussion, yes, thank you. Another thing is with our live-work dwelling units, this, these again include a commercial component, so that would be excluded from that 10,000 square foot commercial component in an apartment and condos. Because in essence, somebody would be able to have apartment building, have live-work units all on the bottom, have 2,000 square foot units, and you meet that 10,000 square foot threshold, and that's not the purpose or intent of what this is supposed to be meant. Last, the design standards, each unit shall include a kitchen. Now, we have an end-to-end definition for Provo City, we talked about a kitchen, and that includes various things of this, but I'm specifically calling out what needs to be included in these units. A sink, stove, oven, dishwasher, built-in cabinets, bathroom, closet adequate for storage items. So I went and toured various places, I'm going to go through, we have a floor plan, and go through some site photos, so you can understand a kind of some context on why I made these changes since then. So this is a studio bedroom, 490 square feet. It has, as you can see in here, a closet, it's fairly spacious when you're inside it. Now.
Question, 490 square feet is too small, isn't it?
This one technically, so, and we're showing some examples of some of the smaller and seeing how, if we're saying 500, it will be bigger than this, we'll have some playroom, but these each have some components that I wanted to bring light to.
Okay.
This one includes a great closet as you enter the building, and even above the cabinets, you can store things as well. What I thought was a spacious bathroom. Second example, this is going to be smaller, 460 square feet, again, this is a studio. These are, this is a higher-end product. To give an example, this product is going for $1,500 to $1,800 a month. And these each have in, they each have a washer inside each unit. This one typically does not have that cabinetry on the left side, in the left picture there, that was kind of a test on some things. This is a really small unit. This entire building has units, 250 square feet or less. They are all studio, and the pictures you're going to see do not reflect the exact floor plan of how it's laid out, but it is the same size. This is the kitchen. This kitchen has a hot plate, has a microwave, and a sink. There's no dishwasher, there's, there are no other amenities within a kitchen to make something livable. This is the bathroom. That's my hand. You can really get a good comparison of how small this unit is. And again, looking directly at the kitchen. Now, this, these units here, they're really basic, but they are at a much lower cost for people that can afford these units. This last one, this is IKEA, and I also welcome you guys, they have this unit that's 294 square feet, they also have another unit that's 610 square feet, and this is something that's tangible, you can go walk through and get an idea. Based on the square footage, you can make something look like it's livable or not. This one felt much more open than the last one, and there's roughly 60 square feet difference in, in space. Now, back to option number two, that was the 460 square feet. This is, this place has 500-plus units there, and their amenities are extremely high-end. Having a mixed-use development, maybe having smaller units at the 500 square foot amount. Adventures are important, they're key, and they provide a sense of place here. They have two different areas on this top deck. They have two different areas on this top deck for amenities. And then also on the base and the main level of there, they have a great library as well. I was very impressed, nor could I afford to live here. In addition to this, we looked at the sign code to see what types of signs would be permitted within the code or not. Now, all of this, all of these types of signs would be permitted within the zones. Thinking on where these would be, these are residential zones. This is a residential neighborhood. We don't want large signs. We don't want, lastly, we want it to blend in to the neighborhood. All of these types of signs is existing code that we currently have within our city right now. We wouldn't want signs taller than five feet, but allow wall signs, awnings, and then.
Does it specifically say taller than? Because I was wondering if that meant five square feet or?
I'm sorry.
In height, so you're talking about?
In height, yes. The area of the site, the area of the sign would be, is done through the code based on this.
So are you going to add something that says in height or does it already say that in the code itself?
It says in the code.
Height, maximum height. Are these changes to, is this the same as what you were showing us before? This is different language than what's in the staff report?
Is this, I may have, the staff report is correct. I would just shorten that.
Okay, I just want to make sure we weren't talking about the other stuff you showed us that was different language than the staff report.
Yeah, no.
Okay.
Thank you. Design standards, like I said, we're adding the neighborhood mixed use to be similar with our very low density and our low density zone. And the mixed use zone would be similar to our campus mixed use zone. Again, residential neighborhood characteristics. Only change here is adding in the neighborhood mixed use to be just aligned, just in alliance with the VODR and LDR zone. Fencing standards, same thing, having these adding in to be part of our residential zones. Got duplicated, okay. My apologies. And supplemental landscaping requirements by the zone, adding in the neighborhood mixed use and mixed use zones with it. Now, the mixed use zone may have courtyards and having that be just like our DT and DT one zones. Other questions?
Commissioner Jensen has questions. Other people as well?
I know a lot of people ask questions first because I have like seven.
Not a map amendment of any kind right now, just a text amendment to create the zone.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? I think it's your turn, Lisa.
I know, I need six more.
I have a question. You said there are appropriate areas that have been already established. What are those areas?
Those areas, so in the Franklin Neighborhood Plan, it talks about third south and fifth west. In the Southwest Future Land use map, it has it along the south part of State Street corridor. Can't remember the exact areas. Walkeem Plan has the areas between Seventh North and North Loop Campus. So CMU and it specifically says a portion of that area has to have commercial, but that area has actually already been rezoned CMU. Now, the major neighborhood has that along Third South over by Seventh East. And the downtown plan has it along. I might be mixing my plans, but Center Street between Second and Fourth East, it calls it out. And the future land use map for Southwest has it at the where the, along Lakeview Parkway where the collective roads are going to be intersecting as that's built out. And I believe at Six South and Sixteen West.
And you're, so there you just have the idea of a mixed use zone, but it doesn't exist yet, right?
Correct. Yes, it says.
General plan or a neighborhood plan?
So then if somebody comes forward and says, hey, I want to do this here, yes, this aligns with the neighborhood plan. Here's the zone for it. So I was thinking forward.
That wasn't one of my questions, Bill.
And so just because I'm new to this, so the process to get that changed would be just like any other zoning change.
Correct.
It had to be an actual zoning change.
Correct. Unless, unless city staff wanted to come through and prezone something, it'd be up to the applicant to come to file an application for a rezone for this. Now, because these general plans all designate mixed use for these locations, that then there's not a general plan amendment that's needed. That application is not needed. It's just going to be a concept plan and a rezone application. So it'll come to you, it'll go to council, then come back to you if it's approved for PPA.
Okay, I'm going to go now. Is that okay? Um, my questions were mostly just as I read through all this language. There were some things I didn't understand. And so if we're saying this is something we want for these mixed use zones, I just want to make sure that we all understand it so that we know what we're signing up for. So the first one's on page eleven. It is two D. It says, the applicant shall maintain but not change the exterior character of the building while occupied by an office use unless the exterior modifications are approved by the design group committee. I'm just wondering why that is.
That's existing code in our West Gateway Zone that I pulled directly from that. So I was keeping the code.
Could you, do you know the reason for that in, in that language elsewhere?
I do not. This is the only place and the only zone where we have that code. So I'm thinking with, with certain properties, we wanted it to be right and still have that allowance for the conversion, but.
That the.
For historic?
Correct.
Buildings?
Yeah, I mean, they may not be designated as historic, but something that might have some significance to the, that neighborhood. Specifically, Second and Fourth East on Center Street for that. So that way those design standards are not, they may not have to be satisfied, but the character of that home is still retained for that neighborhood.
Okay. Okay. The next one is on page thirteen. Three A, it's talking about different structures that can project into the, the yards, but it says cornices, eaves, belt courses, cells. I don't know what a belt course is. Sounds like something from Brave New World, and I don't know if that's acceptable. Do, does anyone know what a belt course is? They had pneumatic belts, I think, in Brave New World. It was some weird thing they were, completely unrelated to city planning. No one knows what those things are?
You know, this also comes from existing code, but I don't, I can't tell you exactly.
Okay, so I would just say make sure we know what that is and that it matters.
Yep.
Then at the bottom of that page, in the building height, do all the first floors have to be commercial or just in the buildings with mixed uses?
I think that allows for the allowance to have greater than that ten thousand square foot commercial component as there might be the demand.
So some of them can have residential on the bottom.
Yeah, as long as we get that ten thousand square foot threshold.
Okay. Page fifteen. I think you might have answered this earlier. Number fourteen, fourteen, D, one, three, zero, number two, horizontal mixed use is not permitted. Is that just because we decided we liked the look of that better or is there some sort of safety code that would lean towards that?
No safety code, but in analyzing various mixed use projects, I struggled to find a horizontal mixed use that worked great and would be aesthetically pleasing and intermixed well together on prioritizing pedestrians rather than vehicles.
Okay, so we're just saying keep the residential uses adjacent instead of intermixing them in a horizontal scale. Okay. Page seventeen. When you're talking about how many signs they can have in their frontage, it looks like if there were three businesses in a one hundred foot frontage, they would only be allowed two signs. So would they therefore need to double up or just have a sign that had more than one business name on it?
So the store frontage, but then based on how long that frontage is, they each could have a sign.
Okay, but this is saying there's only one, no closer than fifty feet. So if there's three within a hundred feet or four within a hundred feet, they would have to share signs. Is that what we intend for this language to say? I just want to make sure.
This is, sorry, this is for the, this is for the freestanding sign. I'm sorry, I was picking the wrong one.
Yeah.
They would be allowed just one freestanding sign.
So that means your pizza place and your ice cream place are going to have to share their A frames?
Yes, not A frame. This is a freestanding.
Like?
Standing sign.
Concrete into the ground?
That could have multiple.
Okay. So it's totally feasible to do that. Okay. I apologize if this is boring to everyone. I just want to make sure I understand. Okay, top of page nineteen. It says signs shall not consist of sign cabinets. These are in tenant identification signs. What's a sign cabinet? Is that like what you would see at a doctor's office with little letters for each office? Inside of glass? Does it matter that we understand these terms? I don't know. Nobody knows what a sign cabinet is?
Sign cabinet is the, pretty acceptable for the it's not channel letters. It's a box that's usually internally illuminated, like sand or some type of other plastic.
Okay.
Aluminum box and generally viewed as being less attractive than lots of other kinds of signage.
So we're just saying we want it to look nice in that requirement. Okay. Then just general questions about signs, specifically on page twenty, all these A frame signs that are allowed and monument signs. Do all of these signs require sign permits or is, is the assumption if it's allowed in code that they can do it without a sign permit?
They all require a sign permit.
So even though it's allowed, they still have to go through that permitting process?
Verify that it meets the code.
Okay.
Now, if they don't have a permit, we notice that that could be a code, code compliance issue and then we will rectify that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I kind of rely on you to do that. Detail.
It's exhausting.
I know. It is.
Thank you, Lisa.
Really, really good. Okay. Do we have any more questions? Do we have any public comment on this issue? Seeing none, we will.
Question.
Okay.
With the development services discretion for horizontal mixed use, is that something you expect to, to use mostly through in the form of like development agreements where, where things are maybe approved in a phase or something with, on condition of greater parts being developed later on?
Okay.
And, and my thought is thinking again, locations where these are going to be, I don't I'm kind of not foreseeing many horizontal mixed use because of the smaller locations that we have. I mean, the biggest location that we have would be that Geneva Road Center Street area that says Village Mixed Use Center, but that'd be more for the MU zone.
So if you had an old historic larger home and somebody was putting an office on the first floor and one bedroom or studio apartment on the first floor and then a larger apartment on the second floor, is that horizontal or vertical?
Using both.
Vertical.
Vertical. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any additional comments or questions for staff? I am opening and closing the public comment. Sweet. I've already noted that there is no one here. Do we have any commissioner discussion on the item? Commissioner Jensen?
Surprise. I just want to, I guess for Melissa's benefit, we've had some projects in the recent months that we wished we had something like this for, so I'm excited that there's another option that we can work within the parameters of. And I love on page four, one of the staff analysis points says this is in B. By adding the mixed use zones, design standards and clear supplemental requirements, developers, property owners and city staff can more easily work through the project review process with a level of certainty. And so I feel like staff can do a lot of clearing up details before something comes to us and there can be options for the developers. So I'm, I have no problem with this.
Yeah, and it's still the commercial aspect of it is optional, not required for a mixed use zone.
If they are doing apartments, then we are requiring that commercial component to be there, to be built in for it.
Okay.
Now, now it's going to have that ten thousand square feet built for it. So let's, let's say they had, they built it out for it. They have, but it's not being occupied yet. It's at the floor space for it. But it is available for it as that demand comes.
Okay, so they have to.
Two hundred city view has it was built at that commercial, that fourteen feet and has that availability on that first floor once that demands there.
So it is required for it to be to have the accommodation for a commercial, but it's not required for them to have a commercial tenant when they go in.
Correct.
Okay. Which is why that first floor height has to be a certain standard so that commercial can go in.
Correct.
Okay. I, I really like that, that the city is doing this as well, that it answers some questions that we've struggled with a little bit over time. Other seeing none, are we ready to have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motions.
Turn on you. Want to read this?
Okay. Item number three. I move to to recommend approval to the city municipal council approval of item number three. Ordinance text amendment to add the mixed use zones as chapter fourteen point one four D and signs permitted in the mixed use zones as sections fourteen point three eight point one zero six to the Provo City Code and amend related development standards.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Anderson. All right, any discussion on the motion? We ready to vote? Okay, Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, and moving to item four. The Development Services Department requests to amend the downtown design standards fourteen point thirty four point two ninety five and interim transit oriented development zone, transfer oriented zone fourteen dot twenty three of the Provo City Code relating to design standards with citywide application. And Javon again has the staff report.
Thanks. So we are just amending this, the downtown and design standards to be similar to ours. Section fourteen thirty four, two eighty seven, which is our residential mixed use design standards, which has a layout that's really helpful as developers and as staff as we're using this. Now, there's something we've added into the design standards. Actually, one other thing, the design standards were adopted back in twenty ten and we haven't done a revision really of them, significantly of them yet. Again, this is just more an update rather than, it's not really robust revision. The addition to number one, two and six, that is the same as existing code coming from fourteen thirty four, two eighty seven. One of the changes you're going to see in this is that we're adding building materials, we're limiting exterior materials, the following finishes are going to be limited to twenty percent. Your cement based stucco, your, I never say this word right, EPIS and synthetic stucco. The ITA zone had in the title explanatory graphics and then it's had in the body said that as well. And it, but yeah, it just so referenced you to our downtown design standards. So this is just a clerical error to fix this, to have it aligned with the other downtown zones. One change you're going to see, our existing code says that glass about the first story needs to be limited to fifty percent of it. We are proposing to remove this with the, a lot of the changes have, that have happened downtown convention center, the courthouse, the new skin. And thinking costs of construction and seeing what glass buildings can be, we feel like this is an appropriate time to remove that restriction. Keeping in mind that with our historic district, anything that is in that area would go through landmarks commission and would be reviewed by that board. would go through Landmarks Commission, and we would be reviewed by that board. Any questions?
I'm wondering if in the agenda, um, item number four, should it say interim transit oriented development zone?
Isn't it ITA?
ITA, yes.
Okay, it's also the same on the next page in the overview.
Okay.
So to clarify, is it okay if I ask this?
Um, on that one, the last one you showed us, you're removing that because we don't have a problem with there being more glass in the structures? Or because it doesn't matter, like, what? I'm not sure I understand why that was removed.
It allows, uh, more buildings to have more glass.
Okay, so we don't have a problem with glass facades? It's okay, okay.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Commissioner Jensen?
Okay, page eight of the staff report. Um, chapter 14.23, it, um, takes out graphics and just has design standards there. And then I'm assuming that it will verbally describe those. I'm assuming that the, if I remember from our discussion about this earlier, the previous graphics were dated and that's why we were getting rid of them. But why are we removing graphics here altogether when we've just gone to huge measures to add them in so many places elsewhere in our code?
The graphics were already moved, the only thing it said here was explanatory graphics in reference to you to the design standards of.
So the graphics will still be in?
The graphics were already moved. Um, that application came through already, and those have been.
In February when we talked about this?
Yes.
Are there going to be new ones put in?
Not to my knowledge.
So even though we've decided graphics are helpful for the interpretation of, of the ordinance in so many other cases, in this case, we thought they were not helpful.
Correct.
That's what you're saying. Okay.
Any other comments or questions? All right, we will open it up for public comment. And seeing no one, we will close the public comment section.
Laurie, may I say one more thing? In our other downtown zones, when you get to this section that says design standards, this language is just alike with our other design standards, subsections.
Okay, um, do we have any discussion on this?
I have a question from Dave.
Um, Commissioner Jensen?
Dave, when we talked about this in February, you had concerns about what we were doing when we amended the language. Do I remember that right?
Uh, it sounds about right, but I have no recollection of what that specifically was.
I think it was because we were, we were making big changes with like, how far the sidewalks had to go out, and they were, there were some design elements you didn't like. But do you have a problem with any of this language today?
You know, not, no.
Okay.
I don't.
I just want to make sure we weren't overlapping concerns there.
It's the idea of it.
It was really rushed.
In some of our streetscapes, it's a little bit more.
Okay.
Fabers and stuff like that. But I don't think this necessarily.
It doesn't conflict with that concern?
Uh, it doesn't make it worse.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all I wanted to clarify.
Okay.
Laurie, that, that discussion dealt with the downtown, um, streetscape design standards when we had the discussion. And that's where that was with, and I recall that now, yes.
Okay. All right, other comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, are we ready for a motion?
Did I hear that? Adam Chair.
May I make a motion?
Please.
I move that we recommend that item number four, the proposal to amend the downtown design standards and interim transit oriented zone of the Provo City Code relating to design standards be approved.
Okay. Thank you. Um, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Jensen. All right, um, any discussion of the motion?
Just to make sure we're recommending it for approval, we're not approving it.
Yes, we are recommending to approve as written. Although the word transit oriented development should be adjusted for the next agenda for the city council. Okay, any, um, seeing no interest in discussing this, we will move to the vote. Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
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 All right, the vote is unanimous. Thank you all, do we have, um, any other items of business that we need to discuss? If not, we will plan to see you the second week in June. Thank you.
I move to adjourn.
Robert, second that, all in favor?
Aye.